He told me he had to leave. Barbara left. You still have quorum? We would be better, but anyhow, we're we'll call this meeting back to order. I think we have quorum here, staff's here. And we'll put on the Scott Taylor's gonna bring us, I think, is that right, Randy? The Baumie Beach Estates Red Line Revision. Put this on the floor, that report P D R C W twenty-five eighteen be received, and that the red line revision for plan of subdivision file forty-two T two thousand and six dash oh eight, Baumie Beach Estates are approved, subject to the revised conditions set out in the attached notice of decision. Put that on the floor. Counselor Mackey. Counselor Bell. Okay, Scott.
Thanks, Wharton Halliday, members of council. So I do just have a brief presentation here. What you see on the screen there is the subject lands. They're about ten acres in size, and they're in the settlement area of Baumie Beach. This relates to a plan of subdivision that was originally applied for in the year two thousand and six and originally draft approved in the year two thousand and eleven. And up on the screen now, you'll see the the draft plan of subdivision. It's for nine lots, and and the only thing that's changing this go around is when they were getting close to registering the subdivision and 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 looking at clearing the site for construction, they did locate some additional utilities just adjacent to the road allowance. So this red line revision would facilitate a sixteen-foot strip along the road allowance that you can see. It's kind of tough to see on the screen, but just in the in the south of the property, along Baumie Beach Road there, there's a little red line. So this would would take that sixteen-foot strip and deed it to the road allowance, rather than have the utilities spread across the nine lots. Beyond that, there would be no further changes to the plan of subdivision. It will be exactly as was approved in in the year two thousand and eleven. And the township was the one that requested this change, and and they've they've consented to the red line revision, and furthermore, we've had no concerns from from the public or agencies. The only draft condition that would change would be draft condition number one, and that's simply to recognize that that block of land would be going to the the road allowance. In that regard, we're recommending that the revised draft plan of subdivision be approved in this regard. So that's all I have, but if there's any further questions, I'm happy to take any.
Yes, Counsel Barfoot.
Just to support Scott and the clarification, what they ran into was a fiber optic line. So you know what it's like to try and get one of those moved, or when you start digging around one, so that's the reason for this.
Okay, that's good. Any other comments or questions? No further questions? All the motion, all in favor? Okay, good. Scott, thank you very much for that. Okay, next one is the Gray Road twenty-one. Oh, sorry, Patrol D, sorry, F E. All right. Patrol D facility, South Gate, Gray Highlands, and the Blue Mountains. That report T R C W eighteen eighteen be received, and that staff be directed to investigate options, including the purchase of property to support the construction of a new patrol facility to accommodate Patrol D. Pat. Oh, yeah, okay. Thank you. Move, put that on the floor. Counselor Woodbury, second. Counselor Greenfield, thank you. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Wharton. This report, again, is not for permission to go out and buy anything or spend a whole bunch of money, but this is one of our working groups. Flesherton, you'll see on the map on page fifty-two that we have our four depots, or our four patrols showing there in different colors. So the light blue in the southeast corner is our Patrol D. Currently serviced by two facilities. We have two trucks that run out of Flesherton on an MTO leased facility, that we lease it from MTO. And then we have a a yard in Dundalk that runs three other plow routes. So kind of been, you know, generally kind of inconvenient for some time, having two different facilities. So part of our working group was to start looking into how Patrol D was serviced. So first thing about Flesherton is it is, it's owned by MTO. We looked into maybe buying it from MTO. They are not interested in selling. Their area maintenance, area maintenance contract is up in twenty twenty-four. At that point, they'll probably offer that yard to the new, if there is a new or existing area maintenance contractor. So we don't have any certainty of having anywhere to keep our trucks in Flesherton. So twenty twenty-four, so we know we're kind of under the gun to get going. We have our depot in Dundalk. It had its sections built in fifty, nineteen fifty, nineteen seventy, and nineteen ninety. It's in pretty poor condition. I know a few years ago, at one point, transportation had thought of maybe doing some work there, putting an extension on the building, and it's just one of those, there's more wrong with it than there is right. It's not really in a great location. The site geotech isn't great for us. You know, now that it's it's in a nice spot as far as land value, and it's growing, and Dundalk is doing very well, but it just doesn't fit in with our Patrol D that well. So our working group kind of has narrowed it in that we'd really like to have a new depot within ten kilometers of Flesherton. We'd like, we have a lot of other things. We'd like it on a gas line. We talked to Gray Highlands. Not a lot of positives for going on a shared facility. You have non-union, union working together. You probably need a site twice as large, which limits what you can buy. So with the way things are now, you know, with with Schedule EA and zoning, we know it's going to take some time for us to get a new site. So we just want to go ahead to start investigating into developing a new site. We would come back, of course, with subsequent reports about purchase price and any sort of land acquisition and plans to depot themselves. We've looked at a few others. Lot of modern things going on, depots now, that are really going to be a cost savings for electricity and that type of thing, too. So, yeah, and one other thing I just wanted to mention, so we're estimating three, about three and a half million, probably, for a neat new depot. We're thinking twenty twenty-one. We've got the two million that we would borrow from the equipment reserve, as shown in the ten-year plan. And then our current Patrol D reserve is five hundred and eight thousand at the end of twenty seventeen. So we're putting money into that every year, too. So the funding will kind of have to be addressed going forward, but this is our our recommendation to move forward, looking at a new depot.
All right, thanks, Pat. Any questions of and discussion with regard to this? This is Counsel Arkel's.
So does this just affect those three municipalities, or am I mistaken that part of this comes into West Gray? Or did we realign those boundaries?
Yes, I guess, yeah, part of our, our roots kind of overlap, yes, so.
Yeah.
Yes, it would, yeah.
I think it comes as far on County Road Four to Bootjack Ranch Road west of Priceville. So it's into West Gray. All right. I thought that we were in that patrol, so thanks for that.
Okay.
And I guess to any of the local, probably it sounds like it's either Gray Highlands or South Gate would be in that area. So we're working with the two lower tiers to find any knowledge of any properties that would be available?
Through you, Mr. Wharton. That's one thing we haven't done yet. We've ruled out any Gray County properties. We haven't really talked with our other municipal partners about that yet, so that'd be something we'd have to do going forward, yeah.
Okay.
Counseler McQueen.
I know there were some conversations about this a few years back with Gray Highlands. Certainly, to me, this is a bit new, new, new information of late, but you talk about union and talk about like, like if a building was built, could it not still be one building, but two separate sides? Like, like, anyway, I think, I think, I guess where I'm going, Mr. Wharton, is is certainly you're looking at moving forward. There certainly could be room for more discussion, I would think, is what I'm saying, right? With the lower tiers.
Okay, so.
You don't need to, yeah, I mean, you're going to explore all options, right? And the word is all, so. And that may be an option that you look at, because you'd like to locate it in the right location as well, so. So no other further questions on Patrol D? Yes, Counsel Mackey.
Thanks, Wharton. What's the difference between a depot and a yard? I mean, I know what a depot is, what a yard is. Is that the story from the yards, or?
Okay. Graham's got to define a yard and a depot.
I'm sorry, can I hear the question again? The difference between a depot and a yard?
Yeah. There's not much difference. Gray County historically is called the depots, where the the buildings are, the sand dome and the maintenance facility, as a depot. They can also be called yards. MTO calls them yards. If it makes any further clarification, MTO calls those facilities patrol yards. Gray County calls them depots.
So we have the four main depots, so they're the larger buildings, and then our yards, they have buildings on them also, like the sand stories?
No, they're, we, we have some additional facilities that are only for winter materials, such as the Markdale Yard and and the Kimberly location. Those are just strictly for winter material storage. And then we also have the maintenance facility that stores the equipment, the offices and that type. There are only four of those, those facilities, yeah.
Thank you, sir. Okay, any other questions with regard to Patrol D? All right, that being said, we'll call the question, all in favor of moving forward with this? That motion's carried, okay. So Pat, you're still up for that report T R C W thirty-five eighteen regarding the intersection of Gray Road nineteen and Gray Road twenty-one be received, and that Gray County proceeds with an intersection roundabout design? No impact on the Blue Mountains here, so, yes? You put that on the floor?
I'll move that.
A seconder?
I'll leave it second.
Counsel Arkel's, okay. Okay, so.
Okay, again, this report doesn't get into specifics about which roundabout we're looking at. Just, there's a long history of this, you know, it started in two thousand and eleven. We've been partners with Simco. There's been a lot of changes in staff, council, consultants have changed. So early on, just to make a very long story short, you know, Burnside came here and recommended, due to traffic concerns, that a roundabout was the only long-term solution. Then somewhere in between, you know, with our, with our previous director, signals were kind of the preferred option. Well, now everyone's kind of on the same, Simco has a different director, we have a different director, so everyone has kind of gotten on the same page with our consultant that, long-term, really, the only solution for the traffic volumes, the way they're growing, and with all the development in the area, is a roundabout. So this is just basically a report that I I told our Simco friends, that I really want to get council backing, that we're moving forward with a roundabout. There's three options in the report. Now, it's a, there, the matrix, the evaluation matrix recommends roundabout four. That is not what we're recommending in this report. That was from the public meeting previously, but option one, which is a centered roundabout, property, property acquisition of Mountain Side Sports wasn't really, in our mind, fully investigated. Simco didn't particularly want to do it. So there's other options to the west and the northwest. So I'm not recommending any of these options. We're going to do some more kind of number crunching and designing, because, you know, there really is more in these three options. You could have any, anywhere in the middle, really, between the three options. These three options are sort of the the three extremes, but we're talking to landowners in the area, so we're not ready to recommend an option yet, but we really know that a roundabout is kind of the only solution that's going to work long-term. And there's a, it's a very complicated site. There's a lot of, Blue Mountains has a pumping station in the area. There's a lot of hydro in the area. There's multiple hydro areas, like Colossus there, two hydro regional areas meet there. It's just, it's quite a design, so the quicker we can get going on the design and the property especially, the better. So we're just looking forward to move forward with a roundabout, the council supports us.
All right, so we're approving a roundabout design, design still to be scoped out and getting participation from Simco financially as well? Yeah, okay. Yes, Counsel Barfoot.
Thanks, Mr. Wharton, through you to Pat. And with this one, we obviously talked about it for a long time. So just refresh me on the sharing cost, Pat, on how, Simco was involved in sharing the cost on this, weren't they? But I can't, it's not a fifty-fifty on it, was it?
Yeah, they, they are, it's, it's us fifty-fifty with Simco, really. I mean, even though one leg is is Collingwood, it it goes to the upper tier, which is shared with us and Simco, so, yeah, fifty-fifties. And Collingwood hasn't, hasn't particularly wanted to be that involved with it.
And has Blue stepped up? Blue offering anything on this, or?
Nothing in writing, no.
So.
They have been at, they have been at our, our team meetings.
Sure they would be, you know, keen to to make things happen, but the the acquisition of landless in Simco, would that be fifty-fifty shared as well? So it would be the total cost, that would be shared fifty-fifty? Okay, so that's clear. Counsel Ardell.
Thank you, Mr. Wharton. Oh, I thought we were Collingwood. Maybe they should pay the whole pop. So is Collingwood recommending cycling lanes as well, or the, Simco County, sorry? Because we would like cycling lanes. I know Mr. Abbott was here this morning, and he wanted to hear this, but he couldn't hang around. He had to cycle home, which is an hour and a half away. So it, that's what we're looking for, because back in the day, I was on TAPS, and that's what we looked at. You know, we kept pushing for the roundabout and the cycling lanes, because we knew back then it it was going to be a need, and it is a need, because that road is a real mess, and people coming from the mountain, coming along the road, and I cycled, I used to cycle there, and not now, but it's, it's, it's broken up, it's a mess. And so we just trying to avoid accidents, and hopefully that you will put the correct cycling lanes in around.
Through you, Mr. Wharton, yeah. We haven't, we haven't gone into the detailed design of this yet, but we would definitely be recommending that. I mean, we wouldn't really want to move forward without it. It's probably our single biggest cycling intersection, so. Yeah, we would like to have our, as the other roundabout, we had some provisions for cyclists, we would like to do that, for sure.
So he's on board. All right, yes, Counsel McQueen.
Just knowing that intersection of property acquisitions. There's a Skis or Please, or whatever that business is there, and that whole corner, and which probably feels like they're worth a lot of money. I know that is on the Simco County side, but, and there's, and then there's a golfing tee there, and then there's the other intersection that goes into that, trying to think of that subdivision. Anyway. What's it called? Yes. So I guess that's, that's a big thing, is it needs quite a bit, a bit of land to do that, that job, right? So has that, has that been slightly investigated, I guess? I guess you, I guess you, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, Tees Please has quite a a large widening that was acquired. And this is part of the reason why the the initial central roundabout was ruled out, was, you know, Simco basically, and it's, it's a public record here, but basically said that, you know, Mountain Side Sports, or Skis Please, as everyone keeps calling it, is worth one point one or one point two million. So it kind of throws that central roundabout out in the cost benefit analysis. But now, we've talked to the property owners. That, that piece of land could be redeveloped. Their, their building is, is, you know, not new. They, they're interested in that model, whereas, whereas really, the only model that had been evaluated by the consultant was, we're going to buy the land and keep it, and and it's just going to sit in in Simco County hands, I guess, until. But we would be, we're kind of all in together on this project, that we will be going fifty-fifty. And as far as in, in the other commercial development on the northwest corner, we worked with planning on on basically having their buildings back far enough that we could get more land from them if we need to, too. So we've kind of seen this on the horizon, and, yeah, land is going to be the big issue.
And that's easy, please, it's pretty close to the road.
Yeah, it is. And one, and one thing Simco has mentioned to us is, because there's other options, so expropriation of something would be a little more difficult. There's other options that you don't need, you don't need Mountain Side Sports, really. I mean, you could build another roundabout around it, so that's why it would have to be in a, well, not around it, that kind of around it. So that would be one of those things we have to come to an agreement on, on the land acquisition, and that's the first kind of hurdle. Basically, that's, once, once this report goes through, that we're all in with the roundabout, then that'll be the first kind of thing we start tackling, I think.
It's just like, you, you build it, and if you don't, you know, I think it has to be really thought through, because you build it, and then it's built wrong, or it's built over, or, you know, twenty years from now, like, why did they do that? Why didn't they, you know, do the big picture? And I don't know if you expand on roundabouts, if you add an extra lane. I don't know if it gets to the point, you add an extra lane on roundabouts, like, that's something I think you have to think about in the future, too. That's one of the busier intersections, and it's more, as John McKean was saying, more and more and more traffic coming bottlenecking up there. You know, you keep circling the circle, right, I guess?
Yes, Pat, you have an idea.
And that was one thing I probably should have mentioned. You'll see there's roundabout option one, three, and four, right? And you said, we don't, like, where's number two? So number two was a fifty-meter roundabout, which was a smaller roundabout, which we thought would be a problem long-term. So our other roundabout can be expanded to two lanes. This one will be a two-lane roundabout, or expandable to two lanes, roundabout. So that's, we're, we're kind of building for the long term.
Yes, Counsel Ardell.
Thank you, Mr. Wharton. So we are going to build it to a two-lane, or, okay, good, because with twenty-five thousand cars a day coming in twenty-thirty, which will be there before that time, and the two thousand new homes that are going to be built in Collingwood, which is very close to that intersection, that's a lot of cars. And we need to build it now, so when they're, they're here, when they're coming, that it's already built. And and no sense building a small unit, and then all of a sudden, oh, we got to do some more. Just build it the right, the first time.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Wharton, yeah. We have to do some more traffic analysis as the design goes through. It could open, as the other roundabout is, to one lane now, or built to two lanes, painted to one lane, basically. Or it might just open to two lanes. We'd have to expand the legs a bit on each side, but at the very least, we would be built two lanes, painted to one lane.
Okay, any other questions? Yes, Counsel Greenfield.
Thank you, Mr. Wharton, thank you, Mr. Hoy. First of all, my, I'm correct in thinking, no matter where you go or what you do, the hydro has to be changed, like, those, they've got some big monster poles there, and I think they're fairly recent, too, and Hydro One's going to love us, for that. Talking about the diameter of this, I I don't know, I think we should be looking at four-lane roundabout. Minimum of three, because it is going to be busy at twelve months a year, twenty-four seven. But let's not, let's not make it too small.
We'll address that and bring that back.
You will, yeah.
Before we get too far down the road.
Okay, good. So you're going to look at all options? Okay, so there we are. Any other, we'll call the mo, motion, all in favor? Okay. The motion's carried. Okay. Pat, you're still up for another tandem award, or somebody else handling it? Graham's going to handle it, okay. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So I'm going to put this on the floor, that report T R C W thirty-seven eighteen be received, and that R F T T S thirty-three dash eighteen for one steel box, pan, and plow truck be awarded to BNI's Complete Truck Center for the bid amount of two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars, exclusive HST, and that in accordance with section twenty-five dash point six B of the procedural bylaw, that BNI's Complete Truck Center is hereby awarded the contract in advance of the council meeting on July the thirteenth to expedite the completion of the vehicle for the two thousand and eighteen, nineteen winter season, and that the tendered unit price has been approved by Gray County's insurance company, with the exception of ten thousand dollar deductible, and the three thousand and three dollars salvage fee totaling thirteen thousand, three oh eight, and that the total unbudgeted amount of thirteen thousand, three hundred and eight be funded from the Transportation Services Equipment Reserve. Put that on the floor. Counselor Hicks, seconder. Counselor Barfoot. Okay.
All right, I'll, I'll be brief. I think most of the information that is required is in the report. Sharon did a terrific job of breaking down all the financial components of that, and they're listed in the recommendation, and also in the financial resource implications. Some of the things I might just add for background is that that salvage fee that we paid, three thousand, three hundred and eight dollars, we felt that that was a good investment, because there is a a great value to that salvage truck. And just to name a few things, there was a four thousand dollar hoist cylinder, ten tires that were at eighty percent tread, and the one-way end frame are all salvageable from that truck. So we figure conservatively, probably about ten thousand dollars worth of salvage value there. So even though the unbudgeted part is being funded from the Transportation Equipment Reserve, we feel that, you know, it is going to be pretty much a wash, considering that salvage. In order to come up with this, this truck and get it available for this season, we did have, have to modify the specs somewhat, not a lot. The one spec that we changed was we didn't ask for the blue color. So this truck was off the lot, it is white. It's planned to, to decal it with the blue Gray County logo, and at such time that the box or the frame would be scheduled for painting, that's when we would look at painting the cab to match the rest of the fleet. The other spec that we, we lightened up was, we didn't ask for a specific tire brand. We do have a brand that we, we feel is superior to others, and most tenders for these tandems are, are specified with that brand. We took that out. And so the result was the, the bid amount that you can see there, which is actually about four thousand, or four thousand, six hundred and ninety-three more than our, our tendered tandems for this current year. So considering the need for the truck in the short timeframe, I think we got good value out of that tender.
That's good, innovative. All right, any further questions on this time? Yes, Counsel Bell.
Thank you, Ms. Wharton. Not to do with this so much, Graham. Couple of years ago, we bought two trucks at once. We bought one with aluminum body and one with stainless, stainless steel body. Can you report, because I think Counsel Pringles, I remember, was on this. We thought by doing that kind of little comparison on like-for-like deal, can you tell us anything about that? And I know, I know this is an insurance deal, and you went with a metal box, but just wanted to hear about those two.
Yeah, so we talk about that often. The information, we haven't got it really defined yet. We're hoping that by next year's tender, we'll know all the costs and the comparisons. This one, because it was an insurance claim, it was like-for-like, and based on that, plus that our analysis of the two other bodies weren't complete, that we went with the steel box on this truck.
Fair enough, thank you.
Thanks for that. Any other questions? Seeing none, call the votes. All in favor? Motion's carried. Okay. Now down to I, which is Minister of Education amended agreement, so that S S R C W ten eighteen regarding a further amendment to the two thousand and eighteen Child Care Ontario Transfer Payment Agreement, increasing the funding from eight million, three, three, six, eight, five, nine, to eight million, nine, seventeen, three, twelve be received, and that the Wharton and Clerk be authorized to execute the two thousand and eighteen Child Care Ontario Transfer Payment Agreement. Amendment, third revision, amending agreement number one with the Ministry of Education. Barbara. Put it on the floor. Move her in second. Counsel Fosbrook, Counsel Wright, thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Wharton. So this is the third time that we're bringing this particular agreement to you, which should be the last one. We had received. We had received two other earlier versions, and so, we are the service system manager, and we contract then with the Ministry of Education. They had previously provided us some service management agreements in February, and then again in April, and finally, this one was received on May 8th. And what this does is, this then provides us, over and above our original funding for 2018, it provides us with an additional $46,647 for regular childcare funding, just over $330,000 for expansion plan funding, an additional $201,000 for licensed home childcare funding, and these funds are 100% provincial. So, we've taken this report, and it looks a little different from your previous reports we provided to you. We wanted to demystify the childcare system a little bit for you, so there's a lot of information in here. I'll just draw your attention to a couple components, and one of the things that I would like to draw attention to is that we have two service agreements with the Ministry of Education. One is for childcare, and that's this one, third version. And what it does is, it provides funding for all the childcare programs. And then, there is a separate one, which is the Early Years Child and Family Services Agreement, and that's the early-on program for family programs, and that also has been received, and a second one was amended. So, if you're thinking you're having deja vu, it's just simply because we have received these additional documents from the ministry. So, we are in a position now, though, where we're waiting for direction from the ministry on what this might look like, given we have a new direction from a new government. We still do, though, have commitment for the funds that we have available to us for these programs. What you'll see on page, there's no page number to it, you'll see a chart there, and I wanted to draw your attention to that chart, because it's a flexibility chart. It's, it's pretty detailed, but the funding lines that are included in the budget for childcare program funding are, there's a vast amount of them. We went into some detail and provided you with some background, but what the province has done is similar to what I heard being asked for earlier this morning with delegations, and that is flexibility and looking at rural needs. So, as much as each province, or each, sorry, each service system manager receives funding under each of these allocations, we have been given some flexibility on how to use them, based on our needs here. And we have rural needs, so we really appreciated that. The other piece I wanted to bring to your attention is that we work very closely with some other service providers. So, we're a pure service system manager, where we don't have childcare operators that work with us as part of our system. We purchase the service. We also purchase the service from our special needs operators, and we have three of them, and they would be Thames Valley for speech and language, Keystone Children's Mental Health, and Community Living for special needs. So, again, we are committed to working with those partners, as well as the operators, and as well as, of course, our very valuable home childcare system. And one of the things I would also mention is that we do not have a waitlist right now. Part of our expansion fund did include additional funding for that. We used those dollars, though, last fall to assist us with the change in our sliding scale. So, if you recall, we needed to update our fee subsidy allocation, and we certainly did that, the calculation and how we, how we managed that. So, that's been a change we used the additional funding for. And that would help us to meet the two priorities, better accessibility to childcare and more affordable childcare. Finally, one thing I wanted to just mention today, while I had the opportunity, was just this morning, there was a late-breaking report, a couple of reports, actually, on, they're calling it childcare deserts, in, in, so, what I wanted to do is just give a little bit of background. The childcare desert is actually described as a place where at least three kids are in potential competition for licensed spaces. So, we are, are mapping, the map they provided to us, show us to be somewhat of a desert, but we don't believe they've included our home childcare program when they looked at this. They were looking at operators. And so, our home childcare service is a very valuable piece of that continuum of care. So, we're gonna come back to you with more information on that as more comes out, but I just wanted you to be aware that it's not as dire as it actually looks, and that the percentages for Gray County aren't nearly what, what is showing in the reports. A couple of the things that they do report on are that best childcare in Canada would be in Quebec and Prince Edward Island, where 70% or more coverage rates, we're being, it's indicating that we have a much lower rate, and yet, it's not reflective of what's really happening in Gray. Okay? Any questions?
Yes, Gail, our expert.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Warden, thank you, Barbara. I applaud you and your team and, and for getting more money for Gray County. It's wonderful that we can do that. And I, I know when you said that, that report came out, and Quebec is one of the better places, but I heard a report from the previous government saying that there was so much controversy with the, with the way the, the funding and the Quebec model was basically no good. But it is working, and it's working quite well, because it involves commercial and it involves the nonprofit. There's no differential between us. And, and I'm still in RECE, and when we all walked out of college, myself, for four years, you don't know what direction you're gonna take, so you could be working for commercial or nonprofit, and they need to stop this nonprofit versus the commercial. And, but it's, it's nice that we're getting more money, and hopefully, there'll be more money after that reports come out, to that they realize that there is three to, for one spot. And I know where my centers were, sometimes we had five or six children competing for one spot. So, that puts a huge stress, and then when the fees went up, that was another huge stress. And also, for Gray County not having a waitlist. That's amazing. You know, my centers were on a waitlist for 18 months before we could get a child. That's unacceptable, totally unacceptable. But Gray County's doing a wonderful job. Those are my just little comments.
Thank you for that. Counselor Greiffield.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, thanks, Barb. That sounds like a good news report. Just to follow up on Counsel Erdell, I just heard on a Toronto radio station this morning, they were talking about childcare, and they were actually talking about childcare deserts, where, in, in our province, and maybe countrywide, but there's perhaps one space for every three, three children, and primarily rural or small communities. But it sounds like Gray County is doing very, very well, and I, and I really think that's, that's something, when, when we talk about bringing new people into Gray, regardless of their status, or where they come from, this is, this is a bit of a selling point.
Any other questions, any other discussions? Well, let's call, call the motion for a vote. All in favor? Motion's carried. Thanks, Barbara.
Great, thank you so much.
Okay. Heather is gonna take the podium now, and I'm gonna read this long dissertation here. That effective January, the first 2019 council salaries include all meetings, including subcommittee and task force meetings, as well as social obligations, and no per diems be paid, with the exception of approved conferences, as outlined in the conference policy, and that the warden's salary include all meetings and attendance at conferences in one annual salary, and that salaries and per diems be adjusted annually based on the, on the approved non-union increase process, and that missed meetings continue at the limit of three per year for councillors and 12 for the warden, after which the salary is reduced by a full day pay per day, per diem, and that the current $50 technology allowance be included as part of the council salary, and that council salary be adjusted to reflect the removal of one-third taxable allowance by keeping the net salary the same as it would have been with the one-third taxable allowance, and that council salary be paid at the 55th percentile of the approved comparators list used by the non-union group, plus payments for appointments to provincial associations in accordance with the per diem policy, where the association does not provide per diems. Put that on the floor. Counselor Mackey, Counselor Pringle, motions up there for a discussion.
Thank you, Warden Halliday. I'm gonna go through the, the information contained in the report, and then Sandra is going to take you through the charts that she just provided to you.
Okay.
So, the reason we're bringing this report forward is that there are changes coming from the, in federal legislation that are eliminating the one-third taxable income exemption for municipal officials, and this begins January 1st, 2019. So, this necessitated a review of council compensation, and staff took this opportunity to take a look at the full-sum compensation program that is currently completed by Gray County, as well as recent studies that were completed by AMCTO and the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus, to see what others were doing, and to try and align Gray County competitively with our comparators. There's several changes, as the wardens just read out, recommended within the report, to streamline council compensation process, and to bring that council compensation more in line with our approved comparators. The changes to the federal law related to the one-third taxable income exemptions begin January 1st. Many municipalities within Gray County currently permit one-third taxable income exemptions, and are in the process of reviewing this change and its impact. So, Sam, Sandra will talk about Table 2 when she goes over those tables with you. So, Table 2 outlines the changes to those legislations, and Table 3 outlines the impact to those changes, of those changes to councillors and to the county. To do nothing, this would keep the gross pay at the same as what it currently is, would result in an additional cost to the county of just over $32,000. If council chooses to go with the same net pay as they are receiving, then there's an additional cost of $33,000. Currently, councillors are paid a salary for committee and council meetings, and a per diem for additional subcommittees, task force meetings that they attend. It's recommended that a salary be put in place at a, oh, sorry, the salary was put in place at a time when most councillors were required to attend five meetings per month, one council, and four standing committees. This is changed with the governance structure, including the move to committee of the whole, now requiring councils, councillors to attend two meetings per month for regular council and committee of the whole meetings, as well as extra council or committee of the whole meetings set throughout the year, for example, for budget, official plan, training, that kind of thing. While the meetings are longer, they allow for full participation of all of the members, and it's therefore recommended that council be paid a salary that now includes all meetings, council, committee of the whole, and any subcommittee or task for, task force meetings that they are part of. This will streamline an often confusing process for councillors and staff. Per diems will still continue to be paid for conferences, as outlined in the current procedure that was passed by bylaw this morning. This shift is in line with what similar municipalities are doing and have moved to, or in, are in the process of moving to. As well in line with a number of municipalities and our local municipalities, is to align the cost of living increase of the COLA adjustments with that of our non-union staff. Currently, council has its own formula, made up of about five or six different things, and moving to the same one that non-union does would streamline that process as well. It's also recommended that the current $50 a month technology allowance be rolled into the proposed salary. This allowance was put in at a time when technology was new, and councillors needed fax lines, extra phone lines, et cetera. With the provision of iPads and phones for council members in the advancement of technology, the process for council package receipt and viewing is more easily accessible to all members through the county council portal or the county website. Finally, in a review of the approved list of comparators, and approved list, that's the approved list for non-union, as well as council members, it was noted that Gray County currently ranks ninth out of 16 comparators for a council salary, and seventh for the warden's salary. In the past, council has stated that it would like to keep non-union salaries between the 45th and the 55th percentile, to maintain a competitive salary for staff. In order to attract candidates to run for the municipal office, council salary also must remain competitive. A move to the 55th percentile for council, of council comparators would provide a more competitive salary, while still remaining in the middle of our comparators. This would mean, currently, that there would be no increase to the warden's salary, as it's currently above the 55th percentile. It would mean an increase to councillor salaries of approximately $2,300 per member per year, plus the cost of living increase. Annually, that increase would be just over $38,000. And it is recommended, with the changes in new council coming in, and the changes in federal election, or federal legislation, that these changes take effect January 1st. So, I'm happy to answer questions on the process, or we can, Sandra can go right and walk you through the charts.
What's your preference? We want to hear Sandra first, and then we got all the information and, pardon?
On process.
Yeah.
To you, through you, please.
Right.
Why not December 1st, when the new council comes in? Is that because of the tax change?
Yes.
Right. Okay, Sandra, review that, and then we'll take questions.
So, the chart package that I handed out to you this morning, or just now, is slightly different than what was in the council package. So, the first chart before you is the summary of the 2017 treasure statements collected from our approved comparators, of those who actually submitted. It sorted, this one is sorted by wage order, highest to the lowest. The previous version was sorted in alpha sort, and many of you who have been on council for some time may remember seeing a chart similar to this, when the previous council remuneration committee gathered this information and presented to council. The other difference in this report, this chart, there was a typo on it. The original one said 55th, 50th percentile difference of .27%, and that should have been 55th percentile. When we were originally working on this information, we were planning on recommending the 50th percentile for compensation for council. But after a lot of discussion, and as Heather has said, we determined that we really do need to retain and, and attract people to run for public office and to do the work that you all do, and we felt that recommending the 55th percentile was, made more sense to do that. So, as the notes say on the chart, I did do some manipulation of data for Gray County figures. So, for example, the warden's salary was amended to be as if the warden had been in place for the full 12 months. In 2017, we had a change in warden. So, what I did is, for the one month where we had the change in the warden, I moved the salaries between the two, the two members of council. In addition to that, to be fair in the compensation, because we had a councillor on an extended leave of absence, we removed his figures and changed that amount by the annual base salary for councillor. We also took the $50 tech allowance that was, that is normally paid out to the, I think it's 14, 14 members of council that currently receive that, so it's an annual cost of $7,800, and we divided that by the 18 members of council, and added that in as, as part of the average. So, in this report, you can see that Gray County falls number seven under the warden, and number nine under the listed councillors. Is there any questions on that report? So, basically, that was our starting point, to find out where we sit.
Technical question, in the sense of, you have 16 counties, but there are 19 counties. Essex, Middlesex, and Perth aren't on this list. Did they fail to submit, or did they? Sorry, you have 16 county, counties listed here, but there are 19. You don't have Essex, Middlesex, or Perth on the list. Were they, did they not submit, or they weren't contacted, or?
So, what I did is, I put a request out to each municipality and asked them to send me their 2017 treasure statement, and then I reviewed their website to And then I reviewed their website to find out who was warden, who was not, and then looked at their treasure state and compared to their website to see how many were on council. So, for example, Simcoe has a deputy, so I excluded that.
So, Essex, Middlesex, and Perth, they didn't submit, because they're missing from the list?
That's right. If they're not on here, they did not respond to our request for information, and I couldn't find it on their website.
Okay. Counselor Adel.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. At AMO, we had a discussion about the one-third. But AMO has been advocating to have the feds not cut the one-third, because then you're going to see a decline in people running. But they haven't heard back from the feds. They've been very silent. So, what happens if they, maybe Kim knows something, but what happens if they don't go through with this?
I think at that point, that's, we're bringing this forward so we can start to plan for our 2019 budget. If it happens that the federal government decides to do something, although this was a budget initiative, I think, first announced in 2016 from the federal government, I think we're a little bit out of step for another budget until 2019. Like, we'd be well into the year. I think we would just have to deal with it at the, at the time if they, if they did rule it back.
All right. And I have one more question from Counselor Eccles here. On the AMO, it states, because Mr. McQueen's paid through the county, but it says something about the executive only. What happens if you're just a director, like me, I'm Vice Chair of OSUM, I'm not on the executive. But what happens if I was a county rep, and I was on the execu, just the director, not an executive, but your wording, I believe what Mr. Eccles told me, is only if you're on the executive, which could not necessarily be?
Heather, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, the intention is if you're appointed to a provincial association, that, because that's over and above your normal county responsibilities, that we're recommending that would be paid.
Okay, so you're just not defining director and then the executive directors?
Correct.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Other questions? Counselor Fosbrook?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Thank you, ladies. So, what I'm trying to get my head around is the bottom-line impact. So, what you're telling us is that currently, council salary for Gray County is 19, 1 and change, right? Currently.
So, this is based on 2017, and it would include salary and per diems paid, the average salary and per diems paid in that year.
Okay. And then, so in your report, on page three of your report, it states, "Average council pay is 26,241."
That was, that came out of the AMCTO survey.
Right.
So, that the average council pay for municipalities within our population range, that was the average salary that came in their survey of municipalities.
Okay, so I've interpreted that correctly. So, then, I'm aware, and have heard from others, and I've seen reports, that this job doesn't pay enough. So, what I'm curious to know is, where are we going exactly? Because I, I'm not even sure what number we're proposing. Are we taking where we're at, and we're adding some adjustment and calling it a day? Is that what that is?
Do you want me to, do you want me to try? I'll have a go, see how it goes. It's really, it's quite complicated, really, but we'll try to summarize it as simply as possible. I think the most, the one thing to understand right at the beginning with this is even if we did absolutely nothing to try and sort out your pay, or equalize it, or anything, this is going to cost Gray County another $32,196.31 next year, even if we did nothing for you. And that's what's part of on Table 3, where they talk about how, right now, because part of your salary is not taxable, and there's HST rebate, all that sort of thing.
Yep.
So, then you, if so, if then, we tried to, through a ton of work, through Sandra, determine how it is that we could get you to something that netted out at essentially the same place that you are right now. So, when you look at Table 2 for the salary impact...
So, just pause right there for a moment. You said to get us to where we are now.
Yes.
Factoring in this losing the one-third tax deal.
And then there's another step, if you go to Table 4, and that's what Sandra's tried to do with the fourth one, is to say, if we bump you, Table 4 is taking today's salary, and saying, if we move you to the 55th percentile, that, the bottom-line impact of that to the county is $38,000 to cover off everyone. And to do the math, though, I did that math on another page, and I don't have it written down, what it means to an individual person.
Yeah, so can we just compare, like, average current council salary is 19, 1 for 2017? With this approved, what will that be for 2018, net?
So, if you go to Table 4.
Right.
You will, you will see, so if we go down to the councillor section, I took the 55th percentile target, that's from that first chart. And I add, because that's a 2017 figure, I added the 2018 COLA that council received to come up with the 21,786.38. I backed out the net, the average conference amount paid to each councillor, because councillors are going to continue to be paid for attendance at conference. So, the 2018 new salary, forgetting about the one-third non-taxable, if that, we would have been recommending a 2018 salary of $20,796.93. So, then whatever the COLA is for 2019, it would be added to this figure.
Okay, so, I, I, I look forward to having this discussion, because I think it's really important. I appreciate your acknowledgement that, you know, it's hard to get people to step up to do this, when, you know, if you're doing it right, it's slave wages. So, that said, we're at 19, we're going to go to 20. But when I look at this, like, what's the rationale for Wellington being 33? Are you comparing apples to apples? What differences are applicable? You know, in order to do this right, I, I think, you know, I would be on the phone with the ones that didn't respond and say, you know, why don't we all get together and do this right, you know, once and for all? But that's just my view. So, ultimately, I guess I would bring it to one question. What is the rationale for not giving consideration to a higher percentile? And I would add to that, did you mention that if you are part of a task force or some subcommittee, that you're not in fact going to be compensated for that?
Correct. So, that with the first rationale is, when we started to do market review for non-union groups of employees, council first of all made the decision on who our approved list of comparators were for doing market surveys. So, there was that criteria that council approved to say, in order to be able to come, to do comparisons from one municipality to another.
When was that approved?
2008.
2008?
So, some of the criteria was that they had to be a consolidated municipal service provider. They had to have a, I believe, be 100 kilometers from the border of Gray County.
So, so pause right there. So, what you're saying is that there was a report done in 2008 that explained some of this?
Yes.
Okay, so if you could just maybe share that with me, that'd be great. And then getting back to, so now, if you take the initiative to participate in additional task forces and what have you, you will not be compensated for that. So, doesn't make any difference whether you contribute to that, you're just making the same, same salary. Is that correct?
That is correct. And I guess you sort of can look at it the same as, there's a lot of work that get done, that needs to get done by council. And some councillors have more time available to take on more, and it's the same with, with staff or employees in any organization. You get some staff who are able to contribute more and so on. But that doesn't necessarily change the rate of pay. So, that's where we felt it was time, with the majority of council sitting on the, you know, all at committee of the whole, the same amount of work at committee of the whole as it, you know, it might have been different on different subcommittees when we had standing committees. And since we're all, council tends to be more doing similar work, it made sense to go with this, with one salary. That is what we're funding, that the majority of our comparators are doing. So, it's made sense that maybe Gray look at that.
Well, I think the end result is that you're going to have, like, quite frankly, if I had the option, or chose to exercise the option, to sit on any committee, it would be with the effort commensurate with participating in that committee. And I would like to see my colleagues compensated for their, for additional effort. Anybody sitting on long-term care, economic development, I want to see them compensated, because I want to see them working at it. So, I'm, I'm not, I'm not in favor of what's being proposed here, and I do think that this warrants additional discussion. It is common, common in, in this business, in this industry, you go to conferences, everybody will tell you, these jobs just don't pay enough. And we're talking about how to get us there? Really? I mean, we lose more money than, 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 than we could contribute to making sure that people step up and feel that their time is valuable. I'm going to stop talking.
Okay, thanks for that input. Counselor Barford, you had some input?
Just a clarification question, and I think I know the answer, Sam. The 19, 1 that you've got here and highlighted in green, that then includes the average in of going to conferences?
Correct. That was the average, that was taking the treasure statement and averaging it based on the number of comparator, councillors.
On Table 4, then you take, you've got the figure, and then you take that off.
Yes.
On Table 4 to get that. Okay, that's what I assumed, but I just wanted to clarify that.
Counselor Mackey, then Counselor Fosbrook.
Just clarification. Did you say the average is $26,000 for municipal or counties of this size?
AMCTO did a survey late last year, early this year, and for the municipalities that have a population between 50 and 100,000, their average salary was 26.
So, wouldn't we want to strive to be in the middle of the average?
Well, this, this took in single tiers, upper tiers across the province. And what Sandra has put in front of you in the treasure statement is, those municipalities, those counties that are, have very similar attributes to Gray County, rather than pulling in Guelph, or Mississauga, or, or London, those single tiers as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, back to Counselor Fosbrook, then Counselor Wright.
Yeah, so I neglected to mention just one other point, and not that it's the only one, but I'm going to limit it to that. So, there's mention of the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Annual Conference? And, and am I interpreting this correctly, that there's just, it's not considered a conference on the selector, and, and that includes the warden?
No, FCM is considered, and actually, that was included in, in today's bylaw.
Okay.
That the warden goes to that regularly, but it is an approved conference now for council members, as long as it's in Ontario.
Right, okay. I wanted to make sure I was interpreting that correctly. Thank you.
Okay, good. Counselor Wright?
Thank you very much. I know this is, this is difficult to, to work out. I know that. And, and it's, and sometimes it's difficult for us to speak to it, because it affects us. I, I want to speak, this isn't going to affect me anymore after this year. But I honestly don't think it's fair to ask councillors to serve on another committee if they're not compensated. And the reason I say that is because what you've got sitting on this committee are mayors and deputy mayors. Both of them are busy with their own council. And what's going to happen is, they're not going to take time out to sit on another committee, because it's going to cost them money. And, and, I mean, it, it's just, not only is it costing time, but it will cost resources. So, I would really like to see you take another look at that aspect of, of this whole plan. I, I don't have a problem with any other part of it. But if you want councillors to serve on ad hoc committees, then I think you're going to have to compensate them.
Counselor Wright, would you like to make an amendment, put that on the floor?
I will make that amendment. As a matter of fact, I will amend.
Want to craft something with Jaclyn there, and we look for a secondary on that amendment?
Well, I'm not sure just exactly where it's going to go, but I would, I would put an amendment on the motion that council would be compensated for attending or for serving on ad hoc committees.
Is that right word, ad hoc, or?
If you, you could strike part of number one?
Yeah, I think, I think that's what we'll amend, I think what Counselor Wright is requesting is amending Clause 1 to indicate that per diems will be paid, will continue to be paid for subcommittee and task force appointments.
Right. Yes, that's what she's saying.
I think so.
We'll work on the wording, but that's the intent.
And just remove including subcommittees.
So, it's revising that somewhat, then, okay.
But it should include social obligations. I mean, you go to a social obligation, you don't get paid. But, but, and it should include all regular meetings.
So, we'll take out including subcommittee and task force meetings.
Okay, Counselor Woodbury, seconding that motion, amended motion. We got it available to see, or you're okay? Everybody comfortable with the amendment? There, there, it's coming up on the screen now.
Do you, do you want to, with the exception of approved conferences, subcommittee and task force meetings, like, do you want to flip that down, so it's explicit? Council salaries include all meetings, as well as social obligations, and no per diems be paid, with the exception of approved conferences, subcommittee, and task force meetings?
With approved conferences, as outlined in the conference policy, and subcommittees and task force, I think is probably what you're looking.
We're working through that, yes, Counselor Barford?
I'm, I'm just saying, like, this doesn't have to be passed today. I was going to say...
It's the committee of the whole, so...
Yeah, I was just going to say, if you want to, I'm okay with working on the wording to come back to the next committee of the whole, but that's just my suggestion.
Well, we'd have to officialize that, but let's give the staff a little bit of time here. Yes, Counselor Wright?
I, I don't think that's, that's very difficult. If we just say, effective January 1st, 2019, council salaries include council meetings, committee of the whole meetings, and approved conferences, as outlined in the conference policy. And then you'd have to put something in that, that annexed, annexed 1A or whatever, or add one to it that says, "Subcommittees and task force meetings will be paid at a per diem rate."
I'll let the CEO and, and, you're feather, fine with what?
I think it's good. I think it's some way we need to be able to recognize the per diems and, and task force meetings. So, you stated it in a positive way, and I think that's a good way to do it.
Right.
Committee is okay with the intent of that, then Jaclyn and I'll work on the actual wording of that motion.
Okay, so Counselor Woodbury, and Counselor Wright, you're, you're comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay. And Counselor Prendergast?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just a comment. I won't be here next time either, but in defense of what you've done, I know I'm not here near as often as I used to be. And I think that's what you've considered, that we used to be here. I would be here maybe three, four times a week. And now, there's four times, actually only twice a month that you're actually here. Where if you were on, because we've combined the subcommittees, so they're all taking place at this time. So, I think you've considered that in what you've done. And I, I didn't think it was too bad, actually, considering that you're still putting a raise in there, and considering the, the amount of times that you're actually here. the, the amount of times that we do actually have to come, which aren't near as many. So, just, I understand Counselor Wright's suggesting it's, it's not unreasonable, you've gotta be compensated, but I, I think we, it still is fair, based on the number of times that we have to be here as a councillor.
We do, we are amending and, and asking that the per diems be paid for, for councillors, you know, that attend those, those particular committees, so I think the amendment should be voted on at this time. So the, so, call the motion on, on, on that amendment, made by Counselor Wright and Counselor Wood, Woodbury. All in favor? So that motion's carried. So then we go back and amend the main motion?
Main motion as amended.
All right, so we, Counselor Mackey and Counselor Pringle have the main motion as amendment. Counselor McQueen?
Yeah, just a question, Mr. Ward, I have some other, other questions, there's still a bunch of questions, right?
Sure. Speak into your microphone, please.
Speak into your mic, please, Paul.
Maybe I didn't want everybody to hear it. Just going back to the one-third, so I'm trying to get my head around there, so table two shows, and help me, help me out here as I go along, so it shows that the salary is nineteen thousand nine forty-three, no, hang on, what, what's the salary for a councillor, and what's the one-third of that? Is the, I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out first, what is that salary? What's the one-third, that we always got exempted?
What table are you on?
So if you made nineteen thousand, are we looking at six, sixty-five hundred dollars as exempted, is that what, roughly what it is?
Five thirteen.
Yep.
Where is that? That's one-third of it.
Please, Mr. Bell, speak into your mic.
One-third of nineteen thousand would be about sixty-five hundred dollars.
That's right, okay. So, where, that, that, so basically, it's a tax being paid on that, on that sixty-five hundred. At what rate? Because we sit here as part-time, we don't sit here as full-time. So, we have other full-time, part-time jobs, or we have a full-time job plus we're here. So, what rate was calculated? Because we could be at all different rates, depending on what other income we make. And, and so, we know that this is not a full-time, and, and just a little bit of a background, what pushed the federal government out of supporting the one-third is a lot of larger jurisdictions are full-time salary councillors and mayors. So they, they said, "Well, why do you guys have a one-third break? We're full-time. At this level, we're part-time." That's, so, my point is, is what tax rate did you calculate the additional compensation for us for that taxation portion of that one-third being taxed on the sixty-five hundred dollars? If it's fifty percent, that's thirty-five hundred, if it's twenty-five percent, that's fifteen hundred, and if it's like eight hundred, that's like fifteen percent. So how do you, like, even the people that are on a, on a, on a pension, and it could be a small pension, it could be a large pension, it all depends, so I guess my question is, what is, what is that tax rate?
What I, when I did this calculation, I used the two thousand and seventeen tax tables on Revenue Canada website. So, I took the annual salary for, for example, a councillor, and backed out the one-third non-taxable, divided that amount by twelve, and did the monthly tax tables to fi, figure out how much tax would be, assuming everybody is claiming single, that they're, they don't have other dependents, because I don't know what everybody's tax rate is. It's, it's an individual thing, so I used the generic tables for that, and calculated tax, CPP, as, as if I was processing your pay. Then I did the same thing with everything one-hundred percent taxable, worked out the Omer's and so on, on all those figures, so that's how I did those calculations.
But that one-third tax affects everybody differently. Because if I made a hundred thousand dollars, and I add the twenty thousand to this, my tax ratio might be at fifty percent. So the sixty, the one-third means a lot more to me than somebody only works here and doesn't, doesn't make any other income. So I think that's very unfair, in the sense that we all know we're, we have other income other than here. So if you're only figuring the, the tax on that one-third just solely on what you make here, then that's wrong. Because we also have a job as being a mayor or a councillor at a lower tier, so that should be, I mean, that's public. I mean, we're not gonna expose all the, all the income tax or what we, what we make, but I think there has to be some assumption of living in this world of what we make to survive, whether it's, whether you're a pensioner to survive, or whether you're a working person, and, you know, like, there's a few of us that are working, you know, so like, there's, and, and so when you go back to the part of, of an average salary, maybe you need to take the average salary, what people make in, in, in Ontario or in Canada, and use that as an, as an example, because there is that level of the ability to have to make enough to survive or to live in this world. So I think the one-third on just what you make here is, is not right.
And, and I agree, and, and I can only base it on what would it be with a new councillor coming in who's under sixty-five, doesn't, isn't already receiving an Omer's pension, because councillors who have been with us and all those times are maybe not in Omer's, or if they're seventy-one or older, they can't pay into Omer's, or if they're sixty-five and have elected not to contribute to CPP, then they don't have those deductions. But I went with worst-case scenario, that you have to pay all of those things on an individual, not knowing what your other personal circumstances are.
Right, but Omer's is a small portion of what we're talking about here. If there was no Omer's, we're still talking about the tax portion you pay on the one-third. So that's where I think that, that, you know, how do you come to that level? I think you're gonna have to take an average of something what people make in the province. What's the average salary in, in Gray County? What's the average salary?
I think it's a comparison of nets, Counselor McQueen.
Well, whatever. Whatever the net income is in, in the county of Gray, then I think that's your, that's your base to, to what, what tax ratio that would be. And then you figure that out.
Well, it's, it's the roll-up, you know, the impact of a roll-up versus, will differ for everybody, so.
That's what I'm saying, take an average of what the income is in Ontario.
Well, I'm not sure, and Counselor Wright will have, have that and, and maybe?
I just have a, a question if I could ask to you. Before this happened, it, it's really no different than taking one-third of your salary as income tax-free, right?
Right.
Like last, for the last number of years, for I don't know how long, we've always been able to say, one-third of your, of what you earn here is tax-free.
Right.
Well, that's no different than what we're doing now. When you stop and think of it, it still affects everybody's salary different.
It does.
Whatever I earned over and above has no effect on what I earn at the county, as far as income tax goes, it's just what I earn here at the county. It's not the county's fault that I have another income that I'm paying taxes on. That's up to me as an individual. Okay.
Well, I think you're right that it is an individual thing, it's just whether the math for the roll-up is, is, and it's based on averages, and I think Sandra's done the averages, and, and it'll have different impacts depending on what level of income you have. So, I, and I would agree, so Counselor, Counselor Mackey, are you pointing?
Just pointing to Mr. Mackey.
Just pointing to Mackey. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Ward, and I do appreciate, you know, what you've tried to do here, but I think the majority of people, just based on the numbers, are going backwards, and I don't wanna go backwards. The one-third, or the twelve hundred dollars that is being added on will actually take most of us backwards, and I'd like to stay at least equal to where we were before. I'm not looking for a big increase, but I'd like to stay at least equal to what I was.
Isn't that what we did?
Twelve hundred dollars, okay, like, for most of us, from an income tax standpoint, if it was sixty-five hundred, like Counselor McQueen was saying, that's three thousand dollars would need to be the increase for, I think, most people sitting at the table, to stay equal.
Right. Yes, I understand where you're coming from, and we might have, have further discussions, the clerk will bring forward some comments, and then Counselor Fosbrook has a?
So we'll, we'll bring your attention to table number three, which, in the resolution, it does say that the council's salary be adjusted to reflect the removal of the one-third taxable allowance by keeping the net salary the same as what it would be with the one-third taxable in there. So, we've tried to have in that resolution that your net pay continues to remain the same, even with the removal of the one-third taxable, so that you're taking home the same, starting in January, you're going to be taking home the same amount that you are now.
Well, that will vary on each individual, so Counselor, Counselor Fosbrook?
So, I just want to reiterate that even staying the same, to me, is not good. I cannot be the only one, and maybe some people are just a little shy, I'm not. Everybody knows, these jobs just don't pay. I know, I'm asking people, "You gonna run for councillor, you gonna..." They're like, "What are you, nuts? Why would I do that? I'm already making good money, and I'm not gonna spend my time making significantly less." So, this is an important conversation, I'm not looking for anybody to get rich, I just think that we need to, 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 to really give this some serious consideration. Who is deciding the value of the people who stand for municipal election? Who's making that decision? I'm not comfortable with how it's being made right now, and I don't think it's gonna lead to anything good, because what I've seen is, you know, a decline in who wants to step up. So, if anybody's interested in more thoughts, I'm welcome to share them with, I'm gonna leave it at that. This is, this is not the direction that I believe we should be looking to in order to ensure that we continue to attract people who do value their time, and do have some skill and expertise and experience to bring to the table. Thank you.
I thank you for that. And Counselor Adel, and then back to Counselor McQueen.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I can't remember the year, but it was put out for the public at large and staff, and I don't know if any councillors sat on that, I wasn't at the table at that time, but I know that they got a consensus of what the public wanted as well, and I think, I can't remember the year that report was done, but I'm wondering, is it something that maybe could be done again? Because we're, we were looking at our salaries at our town, and looking at the compensation, and three individuals stated that it should be a volunteer position. So, I, I, you know, I am retired now, and if it's a volunteer position, I might just go live in Florida, but, you know, this little bit helps when you're retired, but I don't see it as a total volunteer, so those three people, I, I didn't agree with them, but we are waiting to look at our own compensation at the town, when the new council, whoever they may be, be elected, and let them decide, and they, they will have staff, public at large, and maybe only two people on council to look at the, the salary grid, and just wondering if that's an opportunity for a county council to put that out as well.
Well, we're, we're gonna have to come close to, well, Counselor McQueen, you got one, one more shot, even though you're over here too, so, that's...
I think I agree with Counselor Fosbrook, this is difficult to talk about, what we get compensated, and I think that's the key word, is compensated. We're not here to get rich, we're here to be compensated from wherever we take our time from. I'm looking around the table, and this is not a full-time job. Could you live on nineteen thousand dollars? Could you raise a family of three on nineteen thousand dollars? I think I'd be doubting it, driving here and having a vehicle, I don't think so. So this is not a full-time job for a position. So, I guess the question is, is if somebody's going to step up to run for mayor, run for deputy mayor, that's kinda how you get here, is, you're, it's still not a full-time job. So, it's either being compensated from your regular job, or it's filling in the spaces that you're not being productive of what else you're, you're doing, and it's very flexible to be here, because either you gotta be in business for yourself, because if you had a nine-to-five job, I don't think you'd be here, because it's during the day. So you gotta look at, how are you gonna attract people to be running for something? And basically, if you're coming here and the one-third is basically gone, so basically, if you have a salary of fifty thousand to a hundred thousand dollars, or whatever career or job you're doing, why would you? Why would you come here and basically give it away in tax? There's no incentive. So I think that has to be somewhat, as, as Scott says, it has to be a net, net moving forward, or you're going backwards. I don't disagree with Counselor Pringle's, is, is we do, are doing less to what we were originally salaried set, but I think the part of, with, what Arlene was bringing up is, still, you need that incentive of those that step out the plate further, they do need compensated, because they're doing more than others, to be fair, it's equitable. So I think we, as, maybe we need to defer this, come back a little bit further, but I think you have to take the big picture and take an average of what the one-third means for everybody as full-time employment.
Okay, I think we've beaten the horse to death, although...
Yes, we have.
You're still moving.
I agree, I agree with you, sir.
Okay, Counselor Hicks, do you wanna kick the last can, or, and then we're gonna call of, call of, on the amended?
I think that I would agree, this is a difficult subject for us to talk about, because it's about us. However, I, I've heard some really good points be made around the table here today. I don't think we're in any rush with this. My suggestion would be that we take some time, perhaps put this to a citizens group, to, there's a lot of good information that's come from staff, a lot of good comments that have been made around the table. This might be an opportunity for us to have a, a citizens group, take a look at the information, consider the comments that have been made, consider the recommendations of staff, and, and, and come back with something, I think, a little bit more reasoned. That's just my suggestion, I, I don't think we're in any rush, I don't think we have to rush and, and make this decision here today.
No, there's no rush.
I think the, the public input piece would probably be useful.
This is a committee of the whole, so I don't know whether you're, I don't know whether you want to, yes?
Thank you, Mr. Ward, just to make a comment, I've been involved with this for many years, there was a citizens group, they were appointed, and I can't remember when they didn't come back with a recommendation saying that Gray County councillors were very well-paid. That's my memory of it, always. So, ladies, you've been very patient, by the way. Anyway, I think they've done a really good job of trying to pull it together. I would suggest that maybe it could go back, and maybe they could tweak it a little bit. I think they've attempted to make sure that we've got the, we're catching up to the, what's being taken in tax, okay? So if you can fine-line that, maybe to make it look, or make it appear, or make it actually happen, so that we are getting, we're not going backwards, we're at least where we are, and maybe a little bit forward, that would probably be favorable. But as far as that citizens group, we finally got to the point, Counselor Hicks, we couldn't get them to act, because they were frustrated, because they, their conclusion was always that we, as councillors, were very well-paid.
I guess your citizen group would have to be very well-paid at a higher level. Counselor Wright?
Yeah, one, just one quick, just remember that the councillor's at fifty-five percentile, our staff is at fifty-five percentile. If we move councillors up, you're gonna have to move staff up as well.
Thank you. Yes, Sandra?
And I just, not sure if I noted this, but if you do look at table two, when we were getting you down to same net pay, we were excluding the additional Omer's on that, because councillors who are in Omer's are receiving an increased pension benefit by paying, by that one-third tax being gone, because currently you don't get any Omer's pension on that one-third non-taxable, and once it becomes taxable income, you are receiving an increased benefit in your future pension. So, we did, that's why it's not as, it seems to be, it's not very, it's gonna be less pay, when in fact you are still receiving a benefit for that, that additional money that's showing there.
That's why it's complex, yeah, okay. But we do have a motion on the floor, so gonna call the motion and see where it flies, and it's amended, amended motion, yes?
I'm not sure that motion is relevant now.
Yes, it was.
Sorry? I thought with the amendment, the amendment was carried, right?
Yeah, so we've adjusted the, we've amended the motion.
So the, the main motion is now up there as amended, by the approved amendment that went forward earlier. So it includes all of the same items with the change to the subcommittee and task force meetings being paid per diems.
Okay, so that's, it's the amended motion, Counselor Pringle. Okay, so we'll call the motion, all in favor? Counselor Wright? Opposed? Okay, so the motion is lost, so obviously we'll reconsider. Do you wanna, anybody else wanna make another motion to bring it back, or do something with it at this point? Do you wanna, anybody else wanna make another motion to bring it back, or do something with it at this point in time? Councillor Mackey, councillor Barford?
Motion to defer, Mr. Warden.
Well, it's lost, so it's deferred. Do you wanna, an action motion?
If you're, if you're looking to make another motion, you're looking to make a motion to direct staff to do something else.
Right. And could you do that now, because we have two-thirds, so? Anybody wanna, councillor Barford, do you wanna make?
You've seen how complex it is, and, and I, I can only imagine the frustration you's had going through this in the report you've come forward. You've, you've done exactly to the letter of the T to make it work. But I think you're seeing around the table here, it's not gonna work for anybody around this table. They're actually going to lose money on this by doing it this way. So if you can come up with some kind of a method, you'll be heading for NASA, because I'll tell you, it's gonna take a rocket scientist to figure some of this stuff out, and I don't know how you're gonna do it. I mean, in fairness, and Paul, you've summed it up pretty well. I mean, when you start adding everybody's income to it, you're gonna add the county portion to it, and when you take the income tax of that off, you're gonna be way behind where you were before. But I don't know how you're ever gonna fix it. I really don't. So, unless, the only other thing I would suggest would be talk to other municipalities as to what they're doing. And I don't know if the lower tiers, have other counties said they're doing exactly what you are?
I think the only one that's taken a step forward is Hanover has made a decision. Did anybody else?
Oh, in this, in our, in within Gray County?
Within Gray County. I know Hanover had a...
There are a number of outside...
Did they?
...outside of Gray County that have, making a decision.
So we don't wanna leave this without having a direction forward for staff, 'cause, anybody, yes, councillor Mackey, do you wanna?
Well, I mean, I don't know for sure, but looking around the table, I think most people are likely in that forty or fifty percent tax bracket when this gets tacked on to, on top of their pension or their full-time salary. So that would mean that the increase, you know, to not go backwards, the increase should be around three thousand dollars instead of the twelve hundred.
Right.
That would keep us on an equal playing field to where we are now. Not increasing, just bringing home at the end of the day the same as what we did last year. So that would be, you know, my thought on it, just to keep us where we're at, but that needs to be just, you know...
Yes, councillor Bell, you're...
My point, my point was, we have a very capable director of finance back there. Does he have anything in his crystal ball that he would like to bring forward?
Well, Kevin's thinking, maybe I could just note, City of Guelph voted last night to deal with it in their, and they determined that they were going to try and make it even. In their case, that meant an increase of forty-five hundred dollars to City of Guelph councillors who are compensated.
Their base.
Can you come up with a motion to keep it alive? Is there anybody that wants to make a motion to allow staff to continue exploring options and come back again? Yes?
I make a motion that staff come back with a revised one-third compensation.
Here's your microphone.
Sorry?
Yeah, okay.
I make a motion that, that, that staff come back with a revised one-third compensation.
All right, that's fine. That's simple. Secretary on that? Councillor Mackey? All right, call the motion on that. All in favor?
So, do we not get any discussion on a new motion?
Okay.
Are we...
Yes, you can.
Are we gonna still have a closed session meeting after this? I'm gonna have to leave, and I'm just wondering if you're gonna have a...
I think it's important if you could defer to stay to this closed motion. All right, so, yes, councillor, yes, you're allowed discussion.
I just wanted to clarify, so the motion right now is that staff is going to address nothing more than the impact of the one-third change. That's, that's all staff is going to review, correct?
Well, they're not gonna, they're gonna think fifty-fifth percentile. That's what they're gonna be thinking, so. But they're gonna be looking at, maybe ratcheting it up a little higher, so that it's, it's a little bit less, less cost because of taxes, so.
I just would be concerned that the, the motion might be a little specific and not allow them some broad latitude to consider whatever might be relevant in their findings.
That would be a council decision, not a staff. Staff are just gonna try and improve, or from our point of view, of what the one-third salary would look like, okay, for councillors and wardens. So, that's all they're gonna do. Moving out of the fifty-fifth percentile is, is a, is an entirely different exercise. And that's not in this motion, so.
I know it's not in the motion.
So...
Can I say, it would be extremely difficult, I think, for staff to come back and make recommendations about taking you into a completely different place than your comparator group. I, I really do think that would be very, very difficult. It would need an entirely different process. And I would suggest that that's a conversation amongst your colleagues around the AMO table and other places to really look at that. I will speak frankly that I think to go out on a limb and suggest a completely different salary structure would be especially, and this is an election year, I think you would attract a tremendous amount of scrutiny. That would be, you know, we just don't have enough time even to pull that kind of depth of analysis in, and still be standing alone on it. I don't know, that's a place you wanna be.
Okay, so we do have, no further discussion?
Mr. Warden, I would say that we get this one-third, and we can work that out between ourselves.
Yeah, because it always can come back as a notice of motion, so.
And when the revised report comes back, why don't you put in there that a full compensation committee will be struck in the new term?
Well, you're revising this...
No, no, I'm just saying, it says, first it said, staff to bring the revised report. All I'm saying is, is to me, the saying is, the new term, the new council...
Well, that would be another motion, notice of motion at another time.
Sure.
Okay, and that can be done. Yes?
Staff need a bit more direction on what you're looking forward for us to bring back to you. The one-third taxable, and I am not the finance person standing up here, but the one-third taxable, to understand the salaries that everyone around this horseshoe makes outside of council is gonna be very, very difficult for us to pull together, so
I understand.
we need some direction on what you're looking for us to bring back.
So the motion should say the revised one-third of that, it was up there, it's gone again, and, and, and set it for fifty percent, and go on, move it on. And, and then it's simple. Fifty percent of it. And then you, then you nail it down, unless you're gonna get a whole lot of more, you know, and digging up the average salary in the county of Gray...
Oh, that's too complicated. All right, so we got a... I think that gives the, there's been enough discussion today that staff can pick up on that. And so this is a motion by councillor McQueen and councillor Mackey that staff be directed to bring back a revised report on the one-third taxable allowance. Obviously, a revision would be upwards rather than down. So I think, well, let's call this motion, and, and I think staff can understand where, where we're headed, and they'll, they'll take another shot at it. All in favor of this motion? That motion is carried, so. Let's move on to the next section. Thank you for that discussion. It's always, it's always complex, but it would have to be a notice of motion if you wanted to get out a fifty-fifth percentile. And remember, this is coming back at a committee of the whole meeting, so, again, if it, if it's... We'll spend some time with staff to try and come up with an idea here. So let's move on to the next, where are we?
Closed session.
Have we, I think we still have quorum. Won't be more than ten minutes in closed, would it be? Well, they had the opportunity to be here.
Arlene, she's in the hallway.
Yeah, okay.
She's in the hallway, so she's still here.
Still ten here.
Yeah, Arlene's leaving, but...
Still have the, the impact.
Yeah.
Okay, so, all right, you wanna forego the close then?
We're gonna run into lame duck.
Yes, we are.
But we can, we're still within the guideline to take, if something got settled at the, at the last meeting in July, we're still within the lame duck period.
We'd have to pass a bylaw before that. Like, by the twenty-sixth of July, to have council's intention before we get into that restricted acts period, is my understanding. We'd have to have that direction.
I think every councillor that's left has, has know that there's a closed session here, so. As long as we have quorum, I'm willing to move ahead. All right, so, put a motion on the floor, the council does now go into closed session pursuant to section two thirty-nine, two of the Municipal Act two thousand and one as amended to discuss a proposal pending acquisition and disposition of land by the municipal or local board, and that's with regard to community hub business plan and property acquisition. Everybody's here. Kevin's gonna be here.
Kevin and Randy, I think, will stay, and Jaclyn. Clerks are fine.
Yeah, yeah.
Clerks are fine, absolutely. Absolutely, they're always fine. Yeah, so Randy, you're here, so. Councillor McQueen, councillor Pringle, second? All right, so anybody wanna handle that? Yes, councillor McQueen.
Yeah, I was gonna wanna pull that, and I guess it's a question to Kevin, just for clarity. I'm just trying to bring it back up here. It talks about an exemption for small-scale on farms, but it talks about commercial industrial. Does that mean that the county has to pass a motion to allow it? And does that mean the lower tier has to pass a motion to allow it? But this is, if it's over a million dollars, it's just, it doesn't, it's not, it won't work. So I guess my question is, is moving forward, if, is it like, if it was an economic development thing, does the county and the municipalities have to pass a bylaw or motion?
This, this was part of my tax policy report, where I talked about these, this new discounts that they're gonna...
Yeah, you talked about that earlier on this year.
I stated, they had to create these new tax classes, and when the roll was returned that everyone's calculated their tax rates on, these properties don't exist yet. So if we were to have put it in place, they would have been write-offs. So you would have been writing these, anytime these were approved through the impact process and identified, you would have been writing these off as part of your tax write-offs. So, we said until, until these were identified and we knew what we were dealing with, what volume and what amount of impact that the county has recommended for tax policy was, that we would not implement that until, and look at it again in two thousand and nineteen. The province has gone ahead and said they're going to give the education portion that rebate regardless, okay? So that, that portion will happen, that those property owners that are identified will get the, the education tax reduction, okay? What I think is important about this here, though, is they're trying to qualify what these properties are, and they just can't look at the roll. They're, in, in, in their memo, they even say, "To understand and make sure that these, these industrial-commercial operations are actually within the farm", and I'll use their words...
Citizens really have to be viewed to make sure it's agriculture-related, right?
As a result, we may be required to complete extensive property inspection of potential eligible properties, to ensure that we have accurate and up-to-date on file, and to make sure they're qualifying properties. So, we wanted to make sure that you, as, as, as municipal officials, don't have property owners phoning saying, "Why is impact showing up at my gate, looking at my properties?" So you have an awareness of what's going on here, so this is what, what's occurring right now, so, okay?
So, so, so just to follow up, I know that myself and the warden one time looked through our assessment book, just looking at those C fours, and some of them were coming up with a value eighty thousand, seventy-five, ninety thousand, somewhere like that, in, in, as far as value, and, and they did have that commercial-industrial. Some were commercial, some were industrial. I guess it just depends how they rolled up. So you're saying as, as of today, if it shows up in the assessment book, they're are paying the commercial-industrial rates on those today?
Yes.
So then, moving forward, I guess that's my question, moving forward, you say you're not gonna deal with it to two thousand and nineteen, that's fine. But what happens if somebody's coming forward with a proposal to do on-farm or off-farm diversified commercial-industrial? And that's part of their business plan, is, look, we're trying to, we're trying to do this, try to create jobs, but we wanna make sure we got the exemption. So is that something that's going to be coming, or, I, I don't know, like, obviously, it's, it's gonna, it's gonna get around that all of a sudden, the province is saying, hey, you know, you get an exemption, and is that gonna come back on our doorstep, say, why are you county, why are you municipality not doing this? Is it going to be something that's gonna come back and sort of blow up in the sense that, why aren't you doing this, in a sense?
Yeah, we'll have to analyze, like I said, without knowing what we're even dealing with, it's hard to analyze, 'cause these, these properties, like, they're just, you know, this fifty thousand dollar, it's on the first fifty thousand, they have to be properties assessed less than a million dollars. We don't know what, we don't even know what they are, so...
Right, right. Well, a million, it wouldn't take long for a farm to be worth a million bucks. Just like there, right?
So it's, they're creating these new subclasses, they'll have a new RTC, RTQ code for them. And, but for even them to make sure that the, what they actually is operating on there is farm-related to that farm and stuff, they're gonna show up...
That's the investigation part.
Saying they're gonna have to do further investigation and stuff. So I was, we're more concerned about you getting ratepayers calling, saying, how come impact's here? Is your staff phoning impact, complaining about my assessment? That, that's what I was more concerned about when people showing up here.
So, so just, I guess you'll keep us abreast, and I guess the last question is, is when we're at AMO, usually, impact has a booth or people there? I guess that's the question. We can have a conversation with them, too, I suppose. I think Rebecca, is it Rebecca? Who's our representative here?
Rebecca Webb.
Yeah, so maybe we can have that conversation with her. I was in, I was just getting some clarity on that. Thank you very much.
Conclusion is, impact is being, moving forward, even though we may not have, be on base with that. So they're doing the investigations.
Province initiated this. Impact now has to respond. The province has said, here's what we're gonna do on these properties, on the first fifty thousand, give a discount. Now, so they've told impact, now you've gotta figure out what these are and get them classed on your, your tax rolls.
Right.
And to figure out what they are, so, impact's really responding to what the province has done here.
But without a deadline, maybe?
Well, they're saying they have to have it done by the end of two thousand and eighteen to, so that...
Oh, really? Okay, all right, so there you are, all right. Councillor Mackey?
Thank you, sir.
Warden, Kevin, you'd mentioned farm-related. What's your sense of farm-related? Like, there's a lot of things happening there that, I mean, I, I don't know what the definition, I guess, of farm-related would be. Like a sawmill, I don't know if that's farm-related or not. But is it, like, it talked about, you know, things that were produced on the farm, so is it a, you know, an apple press then? Like, I just have no, I'm trying to get a, a flavor for what will be allowed and what won't be.
I'm with you.
Okay, well, thanks for that clarity. Not sure about Honda carburetors, so.
Just on that, I guess, there, there are differences in terms of, you know, looking at what a map has come out with in terms of these on-farm diversified uses. When you look at what's, what's permitted, you would think that that list doesn't necessarily include farm-related. If you're, to think farm-related, like, like what you indicated in terms of using materials or, or things like grown on the farm, for example. It should be beyond that. So that's where it'll be issued in terms of what, how these are, are assessed. Like Kevin said, until we know what that entails, it's difficult to determine whether or not we wanna go down this road or not.
Okay, so let's pause and, and call the motion that, that we received this for information. All in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. So, any notice of motions? Other business? Sorry. Yes?
Well, just, I'm looking to staff then to go back. We passed a motion earlier as to what we're doing for delegations. Can we revisit that in the same meeting?
Yep.
Yes, absolutely. Tell me what you want.
Yeah, why don't you, other, other businesses just add another...
Close meeting, discussions.
We had education on there already.
We did?
We did.
Okay.
So, we're good.
We'll meet.
Yeah, okay, so. Any other business? Councillor Mackey?
Well, just looking around the, the table, Mr. Warden, maybe, you know, senior staff and yourself should be sending out a memo as to what your expectations are as far as, you know, timeframes for, you know, in fairness to staff, you know, in trying to set things up. Need to know, and for members of council, they should, you know, be able to put in their calendars, this is the length of time that I'm committed to, to being at county council and committee of the whole. I think it's just fair to everybody.
Well, yeah, I do feel that...
Sometimes we get out early, but I think people should know that you're expected to be here until whatever time, you know...
So anybody, we are booked to four o'clock. That's the, that's the new deal, so.
Maybe a refresher, I don't know.
Perhaps. I'm not sure how we wanna handle that, but it says right on the, yeah. There you are. Okay, so, thanks, John.
Passed, Warden sent one out, and it didn't go over well. Some people were a little...
No, that's, that's within our mandate. We'll add it to the next, next meeting as the time, start time and finish time. Yes?
I'm gonna do this as a notice of motion, but I'll do this as other business. Can we chip in for Salt and Pepper?